It is six o'clock. I will call the October 10th, 2023 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a quorum, and tonight we have Pastor Jacob Vanover from a Retreat Baptist Church to provide the invitation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we thank you for the privilege, Lord, that you have given us to govern and guide. We thank you for the privilege to be in the country that we are as we consider the circumstances of those overseas and the farmers and the tax. What I thank for our children are safe. What I thank for that we live in a community where we have a neighborly spirit, when we are still ones who would help one another, lean on one another, and call out, Lord, that we supply aid. Father, I pray you tonight that you would be in the midst of this meeting, you give wisdom and guidance. You said that we have not, called we ask not. I pray for each of these members of the board, Lord, that you give them the understanding needed as they guide the affairs of the business of the county, or that they'll consider all the variables of the citizens, our children, the future, and, Lord, that you will aid them in making the wisest choices for us. Father, I pray for each of the things presented. You present it in a manner that is upright and honorable, and, Lord, that his spirit is maintained, Lord, that is pleasing and neighborly. Lord, help us to be strengthened by thy might. I pray, Lord, that you continue to work in our nation, or that you would just guide us, to aid us, provide for us, Lord, in the tummidest times, that we would not be a people who bow out and walk away from thee, but ever cleave to thee in knowing and trusting. As Franklin said, Lord, a nation could not rise without your aid, and how can we continue unless you govern and guide? I pray these things in the mighty, beautiful, perfect, and holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we move on to the agenda, we do have a special guest tonight. We'd like to welcome the Honorable Randy Johnson from the Bland County Board of Supervisors, making his trek across the, or through the tunnels. Welcome, sir. All right, the first item on the agenda is always citizens' time. I'll call you up, and you will have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Mike Forrest.
Good evening. I'm here to ask, talk a little bit about Apex Center. A few weeks ago, I spoke with the county minister there about the cost of Apex. As the mayor stated to me, that's the Apex renovation for the lease, the Apex would be between two and a half and three million dollars. Based on that number, I ran a spreadsheet to see what the return on investment would be, and Steve and I met and went over that. It looked like the use of, I used 2.75 million right between the numbers to pay. That's over the 10-year lease, Apex was going to lose, according to the county, about 1.9 million. Later, Steve and I, Steve and I thought, and that cost had gone up there, kids had gone up to five and a half million. And then, on the September 12th board meeting, the board approved unanimously a vote capital approval motion. And that cost for the Apex in that budget was 6,654,819 dollars. I emailed Steve, and it looks like in February that we're going to have about 20 million dollars in the Apex renovation. Using those numbers, I re-ran the return on investment on that, and my estimate is that over the cost of course of the 10-year lease, the county taxpayer is going to lose another 5.8 million dollars in total. That's a lot, $20 million in squad money. To the perspective of approved budget for personal real estate tax is 14 million. Apex is going to cost $6 million more than a year. What you project will be the income or revenue from a personal property or real estate tax. When Apex was originally discussed, the cost was estimated at $6 million. Today, that cost has gone to triple. I submit that the Apex Center was a flaw from the beginning, and Apex should have never been built. Others agreed with this, including Supervisor Large Terry. Supervisor Terry campaigned four years ago on premise that Apex was wrong and that he collected, he would fight against the Apex. But now even Supervisor Terry is voting for the addition of 6.6 million dollars. My question is, when are we going to turn the problem? When is this going to stop being a drain on the taxpayers of With County? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. The next person we have signed up is Mr. William Wynn. Mr. Wynn?
My name is William Wynn. I just have a question regarding the solar farms. If somebody could maybe elaborate on the progress, specifically the one at Turley Farm Road, but in a broader sense, maybe the whole county. Since we spoke a couple of months ago, I'm sure there's probably still been some discussion. I know the board disapproved it back then. I don't know if that's still the same, or if they're changing. Mr. Barr, if somebody could speak to that aloud?
I would be glad to sit up and give you a call and talk to you about the last action that's come before us was the request.
Okay.
And that's the only action that's happened so far.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know, because, like I said before, it's going to impact my livelihoods. I kind of want to have a little plan other than a week's notice if I need to change. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn. And as Mr. Barr said, that's, nothing's come before us since then, so.
Okay, I didn't know if they'd come back. I didn't expect them to give up on one vote.
We'll, we'll try to keep you in the loop.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the citizens that have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. Move on to, in our agenda, to the payment of invoices. Each board member has received, you know, a copy in their package, board package, copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions, discussion, or any board, or any invoice any board member wants to pull out? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the minutes of our previous meeting from September the 26th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on to old business, we, first, we have an Apex Center ice hockey update. Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the last 294 days, I've had a countdown on my board with a countdown to when ice was going to be ready. And Friday night, ice was ready. The players took to the ice for the first time in a tryout camp, and we actually had ice hockey at the Apex. So our construction is winding down. It's about a $4.7 million project as it's currently set, and we're trying to get some credits back on some of the changes that we've made along the way that were in our favor, so that's not a firm number yet. But we're going through with the engineer tomorrow, doing a walkthrough, developing our punch list, and just making sure that we're ready. The contractor is doing additional work outside of what we have contracted. They've contracted directly with the LSE to make a few changes to some of the spaces out there, so they've developed a junior's locker room so that outside players, whether it's kids coming into play in league play, or adults coming in for league play, that they have a locker room where they can change, making some changes to the concessions as well. So some of that is our responsibility, some is the LSE's responsibility, so they're trying to get those ready. They have applied, the LSE has applied for its ABC permits and for its health department permits to be able to serve food, so they've got some folks hired. They're going to have some immediate economic impact that way, and we're going to see economic impact through a lot of folks coming in from outside of the area. We've had a lot of folks contact us, you know, asking, you know, how to get season tickets or where to find contact information for the folks at the team. So, you know, looking forward to seeing what that economic impact is, and we may want to look at how we measure that economic impact, because, you know, some folks will look at the short-term impact to the county in taxes, but what usually is left out of that calculation is how much economic activity it creates in the hotels, in the restaurants, in shops for people who are coming in, maybe for a weekend of play. So there are considerations above solely what the tax revenue and lease revenue are as well. One large piece of equipment is not yet shipped, and you all have been made aware of that. The dehumidifier still is waiting to be shipped here. It is likely to be late December would be my guess, before that arrives and gets put in place. But the temporary units that you've authorized that will sell after the project is completed, those are working very well. The humidity in the building is staying around 45% to 50%, and that leaves it in very good shape to make and keep a good ice sheet. So that is working as it's supposed to. We have received some RFP responses to doing bleachers at the Apex. I've reached out to one vendor in particular, that they gave us an interesting proposal, but we need to refine it, and I'm not, not in a position yet to give any further details until we know a more solid number. As far as the team goes, they are holding a seat selection event on Wednesday night, the 11th, so folks who have signed up to do season tickets will be going in and selecting their seats. Our team, our buildings and grounds team, has done a very good job of setting up the bleachers that we have now in the best way possible to set up the best lines of sight for folks for this season. You know, and do want to mention, you know, it has taken a team of people on our side to make this go the way that it needs to. So Landon and all the guys on his crew deserve some recognition, the engineering crew, the building inspection team, you know, there's been a lot of us that have had a hand in pushing this forward and making it work. The opening weekend for the broadcast is October 20th and 21st, so I'm anticipating that I'll be there just to see if things work the way that they're supposed to, and I look forward to seeing what the impact is of those folks coming in. The players are very excited to be here. They've been very enthusiastic. They seem to like Withel a lot. They are living in a dormitory-type situation here in town, and everyone that I have talked to so far, at least the ones that speak English and that can understand me, have been very happy to be here in Withel, not just because they get to play hockey, but because it's a very nice setting for them to play hockey in. That's the short version. Does anyone have any questions or any concerns that I can address?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
Well, ain't a question, but I listened the other morning for about 20 minutes on PSK, and they had the whole hockey team there, and it was a very good radio broadcast for the hockey. Thank you, Mr. Hankins.
It takes a little bit to get used to some of the Canadian accents, but I'm sure it takes them a little while to get used to some of ours, too.
Mr. Hankins, do you have a current number? You were talking about the season tickets.
I do not have a current number.
It was like 300 after the first weekend. I just wondered if it had.
And I have not heard an updated number. I know they've got some folks who have repeatedly come in to see when they can pick their seats, some very big hockey fans, and we've had some folks that we work with as vendors that have asked, when we've been on phone calls, about how they can go about getting season tickets. And so we know that we have folks coming from, you know, Bristol and Kingsport and Johnson City. We have some coming from West Virginia, you know, Princeton, Bluefield, Beckley, and even on up toward Roanoke. Some of the folks who have hockey there in Roanoke, you know, you don't have hockey every weekend, so the weekends when you don't have hockey there, they're talking about coming here. So we know that we're going to be drawing from a solid hours, or the team will be drawing from a solid hours radius, and, you know, anytime you see folks coming in from outside of the community, you can expect they're going to be spending some of their dollars here.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Hankins? All right, move on. Anything else under old business? Mr. Barr?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything else?
I do have one item, and you can feel free to say no. We have contracted, we've got a lease in place for a property on Henley Mountain for putting our new public safety radio tower. We've been working through the design process with the tower contractor, or the tower supplier. We have been directly soliciting some contractors who are capable of erecting that steel and getting it up to where we can put the antennas on it and the microwave dish on it. We don't yet have an agreement with any contractors, but because of the short timeframe for doing this, we may have to ask for some indulgence in how we let that contract out. We'll be in touch with you and let you know if we need some help, but at the very least, by October 24th, we should have a contractor that we can recommend and do an agreement with. I just don't want to hold this project up because we need, we really ought to be pouring concrete this week to put in the base for that tower, but we're still waiting on the tower company's engineers to sign off on our geotechnical report for that site so that, you know, they know that that tower's not going to collapse if they put it at that site. But everything from our geotechnical review indicates that it's a good site. All of you would have laughed because me, Chuck Parnell, and Johnny Kencer went out with our post hole diggers and shovels and breaker bar and actually did the geotechnical report that Johnny signed off on, but, you know, you would have seen all three of us digging that day, and I know you're not used to that.
All right, does anybody else, or does anybody have any questions about the radio tower site, or Mr. Hankins' digging ability? Mr. Forrest, you got any post holes?
However many he wants them to be. Now that he's practiced that.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Mr. Barr?
I do not have anything additional.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hankins, do you have anything for new business?
No, sir.
Sheriff Foster, I know you.
Over the past several months, I came to a lot of board meetings, and I think Mr. Forrest is one who initiated started the process of updating major park, decisions made by myself and approved by the board to erect school zone cameras due to the fact that the thousands of people that we have speeding in our school zones, and I gave you a report last week of how significantly those numbers have been dropped. And I want to present you with a letter as well as my intentions using photo speed enforcement program to help upgrade that project. I can think of no better way than to use this funding to invest in the children to ensure that they have a safe and a modern place to play. I want to thank Anton Klein, the chief of deputy, he was instrumental in getting this project off the ground, and also on Blue Line, they've been there every time we've called, and they've helped with all the processes, permits, and procedures. And I'm asking the board tonight to transfer $25,000 from our speed enforcement program to the revitalization of major park.
I'll open the floor up. If anybody's got anything to add, I'm not sure. I'll have to defer to Mr. Barr, what type of action.
Technically, the money is not sitting in any speed enforcement program or police activity fund or anything like that. This is just in your general fund, so, but it is, we do have a tract of the revenue that has come in from it, so I think that, you know, the action would be taken would just be accept the sheriff's request and apply $25,000 out of the general fund from the speed enforcement towards this project. There's no money to transfer because it's not any type of a separate item. Does that make sense?
And before that occurs, Mr. Chairman, I do have representatives from Blue Line that want to speak to you as well.
Come on up, Liam.
Well, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Melissa Parsons. I'm a Bland County native right now, Smith County born, so I've been around this area my whole life. I'm the customer success and special projects manager for Blue Line. Started out last year with Sheriff Foster and Major Klein with this product and have sort of followed it a long since. What I'd like to do is first extend my apologies from our CEO. He could not make the meeting tonight, but he did want to come and just hand present this letter and read the letter to you guys, but, so I'm the replacement. Apologies for that, but I'd like to let you know that, or I'd like to read this to you. I gave you a copy, but I would like to read it out loud and then present it to Sheriff Foster. So, dear Sheriff Foster, on behalf of Blue Line Solutions, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and the With County Sheriff's Office for partnering with us to implement your school zone safety program. Prior to the implementation, five-day speed studies captured 3,900 vehicles speeding through three school zones. That would be Fort Chiswell High School, Jackson Memorial, and Sheffy Elementary, all at 10-plus miles per hour over the speed limit. The most recent data from the same schools indicates the number of speeding vehicles has dropped to 264, reflecting a 93.2% reduction. And I'll read that again, a 93.2% reduction. We are very proud of the accomplishments the program is producing and look forward to helping make your community safer for years to come. We've come to understand that the Sheriff's Office is donating funds toward the development of a new playground in the community. In an effort to further support the community and child development, Blue Line Solutions would like to aid in this effort by donating $5,000. We are honored and thankful to take part in the safety and positive impacts of the community and hope this donation will work toward that end. Please let me know when and where to send a check, and we will be more than happy to get it sent. May God bless you and your community. Sincerely, Mark Hutchinson, founder and CEO of Blue Line Solutions. We are super proud of the program that you've implemented. We are very happy to be your partners, and we're, this is setting the precedent for what you can do with photo speed programs across the nation, not just in Virginia, but across the nation, and we serve agencies across the nation. So thank you for being proactive. Thank you for accepting our program, and thank you for working with us. Sheriff Foster?
Good evening.
Well, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr, I guess that creates another question. Do we need to amend the?
We already have a budget of whatever the amount is in there, and this would just be a donation.
Toward that.
Towards that, so I do not see any need to do any amendment to it in the process. You could certainly, not necessary, but you take action to accept and show appreciation for that grant, but basically, we would, we would take that, deposit that into it, and obviously send him a thank you letter of appreciation for that.
And Ms. Parsons, you'd stop me if I speak out of turn, but it's, it's on social media, so I assume they don't mind if I share it, but Mr. Hutchinson, the reason he couldn't be here tonight is he's had a daughter with stage IV cancer for several years, and they called hospice in. So, and if you ever talk to Mr. Hutchinson, he'd talk about how proud he was of his daughter's fight with cancer, and I don't know if this is doable, Mr. Barr, but in lieu of their donation, is there any way that we could get, like, one of those pickets made in honor of his daughter?
I'm certain that we should be able to do that and could work with the.
The tax center?
With the tax center on doing that, absolutely.
That'd be very nice.
Excellent. Great idea.
Well, I have one every now and then, Mr. Forrest.
Glad somebody does.
We certainly hold Mr. Hutchinson, his family, and his daughter Brooke in our prayers. It's, I know it's been quite a battle, and please send our thoughts and prayers back to Mark and his family, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
With that being said, I guess I'll entertain the motion that Mr. Barr.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I would just say, just do a minor thing first. Since it is a matter brought in from an agency that wasn't on the agenda or whatever, I would just request that you make the motion to waive your rules of procedure to adopt this action on this in the process of making your motion.
So actually, I don't think we need to, because they contacted me to be put on the agenda, and it's chairman, I set the agenda. Tell me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
I just didn't share it with you.
Didn't share it with you. That's my fault.
He had, he had one good idea this month.
If they contact you, and it's just a matter of not getting on the agenda, then no, we do not need to do that. So you could just take the action to, to provide the $25,000 towards the playground and accept the $5,000 grant.
All right, I'll have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Aye.
All abstained.
Aye.
So approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else under new business? Mr. Barr? No, sir. Mr. Hankins?
No, sir, I just would add to the Blue Line discussion, if you don't mind. I did spend about a half an hour online, or on the phone this afternoon with Greg Hoxton, who worked with us at the initial setup. As you're probably aware, they used our contract with them as the basis for their cooperative procurement to go into other communities, and Mr. Hoxton indicated to me that they're in a dozen communities now and going on more that are using our contract, so we've been able to help other communities by implementing it here as well.
All right, we'll move on to board reports. We have the Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee met on October 5th, 2023, and recommends the following. Approving Resolution 2023-33 for the Fort Chiswell Pedestrian Connection Project.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Accepting the Virginia PSAP grant, the amount of $55,000 to amend and appropriate the same to account 3506-457703, and to issue the first round of incentives to qualified employees in the second, in the second October pay run.
Again, coming from the committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions on our discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approving Resolution 2023-29 for the tax year 2023, personal property tax relief.
Again, coming from the committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions and or discussion on that item?
Yes, Mr. Barr, or Mr. Hankins, can someone kind of summarize what that means?
Yes, every year since post-Governor Gilmore's timeframe, the state locked in an amount that they give to the counties for a personal property tax reimbursement. That amount is $1,508,14 for With County. Every year, we have to take that amount and calculate the percent of tax relief. Originally, it started out at 100% tax relief, and then it dropped down to 70%, and we have to calculate the percentage of tax relief that that provides to the citizens. So as it states in that resolution, we give 100% tax relief to all vehicles that are valued $1,000 or less. They pay absolutely no taxes. It's all taken out of that $1,580,14. Then, using those calculations, the vehicles, the personal vehicles between $1,000 and $20,000 are eligible for a 29.97%. $20,000 are eligible for a 29.97% tax relief. So I'm going to make that 30% for easy numbers. So if they had a $100 tax bill, they will have a $70 tax bill because they will get $30 of relief out of that $1,580,14. The last item is for vehicles eligible, for vehicles above $20,000, you receive tax release on the first $20,000. So if you've got a $30,000 vehicle or $50,000 vehicle, you receive tax relief on the first $20,000 of that vehicle, also at a 29.97%. This is the first year, and to my knowledge, that it has increased. It has always been decreasing over the years because your vehicle values and tax dollars have been going up. As you know, last year, the vehicle values were a lot higher. And so this year, the vehicle values are 10% to 15% less. So this has gone up, and I don't want to misspeak, but somewhere around 26% or 27% tax relief was the figure last year. This year, we're up to almost 30% on our tax relief.
Thank you.
Can I do my car tax?
Certainly.
But basically what you're saying, this is back from the former governor who ran and said he's going to do away with the car tax. So we're not 100%, Ms. Lawson, but we're almost 30%. I can't remember how long it's been since he was in office, but...
Long time.
Yeah. We're slowly, one of these days, we're going to get to that 100%.
And my main point was to make it clear that this isn't a relief or rebate that the county's doing, because I've been questioned about that.
Yeah.
Thank you for explaining.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Other items from the committee?
All right. Move on to board member time. Mr. Burnett?
I just have a few items, Chairman. One's the VDOC question. Been asked about the VDOC, the bridge on Route 100 near Rock Quarry. If the VDOC can send us a report on their inspections or any plans they have for, or I just had several members of the community reach out and ask me if it's still safe. They call it the sinking bridge, so.
Okay.
Another item, the Barron Springs Fire Department wanted to say thank you to the water department for weed eating around the fire hydrants. And I noticed they've been spray painting them and painting them before, so I'm assuming the fire department's the one that's painting them.
I would say you are correct, and we appreciate the work. Barron Springs Fire Department does a tremendous job of doing the testing and helping to maintain those fire departments, and we appreciate their assistance. It's good for our water department, it's good for them to get training, and it's good for them to make sure the hydrants are working. So thank you.
And then, any news on Melbourne Enterprises paving in the next 10 days?
They have paved at Lead Mines and at Ivanhoe. Both paving jobs were very good this time. The engineer and I were very pleased. We've had one minor complaint from the fire chief at Ivanhoe. I don't think it's an issue caused by the pavement, though. So we'll go look at that and make sure, but it appears vehicles turning when it was still hot probably caused the issue, but we'll go make sure.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Coop?
I have nothing this time.
Mr. Smith?
I have nothing at this time.
Wow. Do you need to paddle?
You know, that thing that we probably do. All right, Mr. Hornet?
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Mr. Terry?
Just one quick thing, Mr. Chairman. Holidays are getting close. I think we're about 75 days to the Christmas holiday. So kind of look at our county employee's schedule. We usually have like two days off, like Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, but it kind of falls on a weekend. So what about maybe looking at either doing Tuesday after Christmas or the Friday before Christmas weekend to give our county employees that extra day?
Because Christmas is on Monday.
Yes, sir. And Christmas Eve falls on the weekend, so.
I don't, I think the...
22nd is already a half a day.
What was it?
22nd, Friday.
That on the Friday?
Is it?
The governor has, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Do what?
I was going to ask more of that. The governor apparently declared that a half a day on the 22nd. So your, our policy is if the governor declares it, then we honor that. So it is a half a day on the 22nd. Thank you.
So we could declare it a whole day?
Yeah.
If you want to.
So why don't we just make that a whole day then instead of just a half day?
You're talking about the 26th? No, the 22nd. Friday. Christmas is on Monday.
I think it's well deserved. It's...
I do, too.
Well, Mr. Terry, you have the floor. If you want to put that in the form of motion, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we make December the 22nd, that Friday, a full day versus a half-day holiday for our county employees, please, sir.
All right. Have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Bear, I know we'll remember this, but I feel like I'd be doing an injustice if I didn't echo a former board member who, several years ago, when we were discussing the same topic, said, "Well, when you've got kids like me up and down 81, you need an extra day to go skiing." I believe that is still on YouTube if anybody would like to go search it. I won't call out the boy's name. All right, does anybody else have anything? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Stacy?
Aye.
Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Terry?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
I will mention very quickly, we had a structure fire today on Connors Valley Road. The part-time firefighters at Max Meadows were the first one, well, one of our volunteers was first. They were next on the scene. Whiffle came in support because it's daytime and just didn't have very many volunteers available. But they were able to restrict the fire to one room of the house. It was an 1800s house, so older balloon-type construction. They were able to save the house. There was only really one room damaged. So the ability to have them there and respond quickly, along with the support of Whiffle, which responded with its firefighters, and its chief also came out in support and had support from Draper with a couple of members as well. So they were able to save that structure. And so that's an outcome we probably wouldn't have had if we hadn't had the volunteers or had the part-time staff available today.
All right. Mr. Farthing, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Ms. Collins, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Well, nothing, hearing nothing to come before the board, we'll be adjourned.